And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I'll call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is public announcements. Nomination papers are due on September 22nd for the November municipal election. There'll be one seat for the town council, two seats for the school board, and one seat for the Kennebec Water District. Our second announcement is the first quarterly payment of the 2017-2018 property taxes are due on Friday, September 15th. And our second order of business is public hearing. To hear from the public on a proposed amendment to the general assistance ordinance. Declare this public hearing open. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak on that? Seeing none. Number two, to hear from the public on a liquor license application, Class 1 restaurant submitted by The Dancing Elephant II Restaurant on 166 Main Street, Fairfield. Declare this public hearing open. Anything from the...
So they don't have any police violations that would prohibit them from asking for your approval? When they did bring this to my office, they did inquire as to whether or not they'd be required to file once you approved it. And I explained to them, no, that it's conditional upon your approval for them to go to the state. But they may opt to have someone else run their business, and the liquor license would have to be applied for by any new manager. It goes by the entity, the person, and their background on who can administer that liquor license. So even though you approve it, possibly they might not file it. It's up to them. They have not paid the public hearing notice fee, so I would make the recommendation that you approve the license with a condition upon payment.
Very good. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Our third order of business is public comments, limited to three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council on any item or reserve the right to speak on a specific item that is on the meeting agenda when the item is addressed. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Yes, Mark?
Thank you. My name is Mark Anderson Mallor. I live at 16 High Street in Fairfield. Yesterday, I gave the town some paperwork. Town manager, police chief, human resources. Did you get it?
Excuse me?
Did you get the paperwork?
Yes. Can you shut that air conditioner off?
Mark, if you can address your comments to the chair, please.
What's going to go on with that?
Well, not having any information on that particular subject at the moment, I'm not quite sure where it would go to. Until I've had a chance to talk with the town manager, I don't see anything we can do at the moment.
Have you not spoken to the town manager already?
I have not.
She hasn't contacted you at all?
No, not in the last couple of days.
To the town manager?
I've... Is it a legal matter?
It is a legal matter. It's actually a personnel matter.
Then it's...
So I received the information yesterday, and it would not go to the town council because it is a personnel matter. So it would be...
Okay. And when are we going to address that? When are you going to address that?
Point of order, the comments need to be directed to the chair.
To the chair.
The... With what he has said, what he has put online...
Mark, personnel matters are not something that we discuss in these meetings. If you've written a letter to the town manager, she will look into that and get back to you.
This is something the person put on Facebook meant for the whole world to see. So why can't I talk about it here? He has... This is something that's actually on there right now.
It's a personnel matter.
Okay, but then after that is...
How can I not speak on it? If it's already publicly out there by that person?
Okay, that particular portion of it may be out there on the internet, but as far as dealing...
It is maybe, it is.
Okay. But dealing with that person or any subject of that, we're not going to discuss personnel matters at this meeting? That is something that the town manager will look into and get back to you on it? Should it warrant it?
It does warrant it.
Okay.
Anyone that says black dildos matter needs to be fired working on our police station.
Then that is a matter that the town manager will look into and get back to you with any information that she may obtain.
That same person also put on drinking propaganda, and also put on a child that may need, have developmental problems, with funny little sayings on it. Is that what we do with children that have developmental problems? Is we just blast them all over the internet? And use them as guinea pigs for our own ha-has and he-he's?
Nope, but then that is a personnel matter that will be taken up by the town manager?
He needs to be fired. No ifs and buts about it.
Okay, I appreciate your comments on that, but we're not going to take it any further at this meeting.
It's my understanding that the police chief wrapped up his investigation when I alleged the Fairfield police were going into the town of Benton. Am I right on that?
Yes.
Well, what was found?
That there was... That there was cause for them to go over there. They didn't do anything wrong.
Well, they did.
No, they did not. Not according to the investigation and the information that we have read. They had grounds to go over there, and this matter has been closed.
Okay. Can I receive an official transcript tomorrow at 9:00? I need to see the paperwork on it.
No, it was by the policy. You have certain, received the policy, or you wouldn't be commenting on it. But the matter has been resolved, and there was nothing egregious about that.
I need a complaint, and an investigation were done. I need to see the paperwork.
Point of order, the time is expired with a fairly generous margin for comments by the county.
I'm just asking to see the paperwork. The townspeople have a right to see a paperwork, especially to one who complained, right?
I will look into that, and if there's any available...
Well, I either do or don't.
You do or don't what?
Have a right to see the investigation report on that. See, nobody did the investigation, and nobody ever contacted me.
Then it may be a personnel matter, and it would not become public.
Point of order, three minutes are up.
Yes, three minutes is up.
Okay. I believe we have answered your questions.
You haven't hardly answered anything.
There aren't any answers that we can provide. I thank you for coming in.
That police officer needs to be fired. I won't take anything less.
Thank you for your time, Mark. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Or reserve the right to speak on a specific?
Ralph Howard, available to speak on item number 17-81. If you guys have any questions?
Yes. Fourth order of business, reports from staff and committee. Town managers' report.
So last Wednesday, I was able to attend the open house for the Hinkley Solar Project that was held here for residents to attend and ask questions. I was able to meet the entire team from NextEra Energy that will be working on this project. They've also provided us with an informational sheet for folks, excuse me, who were unable to attend the meeting. We do have copies of those at the town office. A lot of questions we've been getting is just exactly where will it be? Interesting piece that they had at their open house, they showed a before and after picture of what the area would look like once the panels were installed. And there was absolutely zero difference in the pictures. No one will be able to see it unless you actually drive to the facility. So it won't be visible from 139, it won't be visible from 201. Nobody's going to see any of that.
Will that also be on the website? Is that something...
It will not be on our website at this time, simply because we don't typically promote projects for individual companies here in town, but we will make the information available for them at the town office, and we do have a contact for folks to reach out to them for them to see. We're also... And they're planning on going to the planning board next month, and plan to submit permit applications for November. They're doing a meet and greet next month. So they're going to move fairly quickly for our process. Most of their application process actually will be handled by the feds and their environmental issues. But that's moving right along. They plan to start fairly fast.
Very nice.
We're also looking into alternatives for covering the fountain in Memorial Park this winter. We mentioned last year that what's happening is the cooling and warming of the air underneath the sealed cover that we're putting on that is actually causing it to break down faster than it did before. So we're reaching out to the foundry that fixed it to see if they have any recommendations for us because the patina is not aging appropriately, and it's not looking real good. So we're working on that. Just as a quick update, the Martin Stream Road section that we're rebuilding is almost complete. I think they have one more day of hauling in material and then doing some final grading, so that'll be good. As you said at the beginning of the meeting, property taxes, first installment is due next Friday. And then, I'm sorry, this Friday, sorry. And then a reminder that next Friday, we will be closing the town office at 2:00, and then reopening the following Monday at noon because we'll be starting our floor stripping and resealing process.
And do we have any committee reports?
No, there wasn't any meetings.
No meetings, okay, excellent. All right, our fifth order of business, to waive the reading of and accept the minutes as printed or amended for meeting 16-17, held on August 23rd, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes. Our sixth order of business is the budget report and treasurer's warrant to follow the monthly budget report for the period ending September 13th, 2017. So...
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any questions, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes. Number two, to approve the treasurer's warrant 15 in the amount of $518,754.94. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes. All right, our seventh order of business is take action on the following items of business. Item 17-78, ordered that the town council hereby adopt the general assistance ordinance as amended. So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on that? That was merely housekeeping and updating.
Annual update from PHG just October 1st effective April 8.
Okay, thank you. No discussions, all those in favor, motion passes. Item 17-79, ordered that the town council hereby approves a liquor license application, Class 1 restaurant submitted by The Dancing Two Elephant Restaurant, 166 Main Street. I will say contingent upon payment of public hearing fee. So moved. Based on contingency payments. Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is he going to be pulling out of Fairfield? Or is he going to have somebody run the restaurant for him, and he's going to leave? Because he's got the place up for sale.
We do not know that at this time.
And it's been for sale for quite a while.
Sad, though. It really is.
Just because you approve it doesn't mean you'll file it with the state.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? No, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 17-80, ordered that the town council hereby signs the warrant for a special town meeting municipal election to be held on November 7th, 2017. So moved. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 17-81, ordered that the town council hereby retroactively authorizes the town manager to extend the bio-renewable fuels, doing businesses BR fuels, lease agreement until September 13th, 2017, and to discuss additional extension, an additional extension for the purpose of building removal. Does I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Or discussion? Yeah, somebody... Yeah. Do we have any discussion on this before I invite them up to the podium?
If in their remarks, they could let us know sort of how far along they are on this project and the realistic times that they're getting it done, it'd be helpful.
Get them up to the podium, please.
I'll try and do that. So basically, we've been working seven days a week, at least eight hours a day, on getting the project moving forward. Getting the roof, the siding, the insulation, all torn off the building, insulation gathered up and put in dumpsters. We've had two 30-yard dumpsters removed already. Most of the purlins are down, 150% of the roofing purlin, which is the structural supports that go underneath the roof decking and insulation, so on and so forth. So basically, right now, we have a few tanks. 90% of the electrical has been removed, which is kind of a tedious task. And most of the roof purlins are done. Need to bring in a machine to take down the larger crossmembers. If you go up there right now, you'll see great big structural arches. So we'll need a machine bigger than what currently have. So we're kind of on the waiting list for renting that. And as far as moving my bigger tanks, we're trying to basically coordinate a machine capable of lifting them and a trailer capable of hauling them, which is, everybody's trying to get things done in the fall. So scheduling conflicts are a bit of a pain. But that's where we stand right now. You know, you guys want a clean site, and I want to give you a clean site. You know, we're diligently working as quickly as we can to get it torn apart and not end up making messes and not having nails all strewn around. We're taking a little bit extra time, making sure there isn't nails or tire popping things left all over the driveways and things like that.
Very good. Is there any question? What timeline are you looking at to complete this task?
Ideally, if everything went perfectly, it would be two weeks. But in 30 days, it would be no problem to be done.
Okay.
And it's mostly up to places where we're acquiring, renting equipment, and people we're hiring to do the hauling, the lowboy. I don't personally have a lowboy.
Okay.
I propose an amendment to the motion to authorize the town manager to enter into extensions of this lease agreement for the purpose of removing the building for up to another 30 days.
Second.
If it's not done in 30 days, we'll be back to discuss what's going on with this project.
So... I guess the amendment to that would be an additional 30 days from the...
13, today.
From the 13?
That would be from today.
Today. So that...
So on September 33rd, 2017. I'm sorry, 43rd.
43rd, okay. All right, so we have the amended motion on the table. Friendly amendment, I believe.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you for the input on that.
I do have some pictures here if you all want to see what their progress has been.
I've kind of cruised by a few times, yes. And there is some substantial progress being made.
Been down to the football field.
The last two weeks.
Saturday, it was, when I was there, it was very impressive, the effort being put in, so.
So, for the 30-day extension, all those in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
We'll have that, I'll have that paperwork done up for you tomorrow, because you'll have to sign it just the same as before.
And the extension of the demolition permit?
Yeah, same thing.
Thank you for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 17-82, ordered that the town council hereby designates an official voting delegate and an alternate for the Maine Municipal Association Annual Business Meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. To whom should we extend that honor?
Who wants to go?
Typically, you've done it based upon whether or not you have counselors that are going to be there, or the town manager that will be there. I haven't made up my mind yet whether or not I was going to go. There are a lot of good classes there that day. So if no one, none of you were planning on going, I can definitely take care of that for you, so.
I went last year. It was very informative, it was a very good time. And I would volunteer to go this year, but I reasonably expect to be unavailable on the 4th event.
I think it's a good idea if Michelle goes.
Okay, so we have a nomination for the town manager to attend the meeting. Anyone that could potentially be an alternate, should she become unavailable?
The 4th and 5th of...
October. And it's a time. What time is the meeting?
1:30 PM at the Augusta Civic Center, October 4th, it's Wednesday.
It's just that day. Are you going to be there that day?
There were some good things. If you wanted me to be, it's not a vacation that you can't.
You have another meeting between now and then, so if you all want to look at your schedules, that's fine. We just need to get this form back. And if we have one, and you have to appoint an alternate at your next meeting, it's fine, we can just let them go.
The 4th isn't an issue for me.
And it's just the 4th to cover for that meeting.
I can do that on the...
If you've never been to Maine Municipal Association's convention, it might actually be a good thing, and we would cover the... The town would pay for your attendance at that event. So if you want to go, if you, did you receive your latest copy of the Maine Councilman, the schedule I gave?
I am not great at checking my mail, so I don't know.
It would have been a while ago.
It would have been a while ago.
I got it last week, and I think it was Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, it would have been last week.
Yeah, we can forward it to you electronically, to the schedule and the events and the classes that they have going on that day. So if it's something that you want to go, we can make sure you have it. It's a good opportunity.
So Jeffrey would be our alternate, should you not be able to attend, and you'll be attending regardless then?
Correct.
Excellent. So... All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
I'll abstain.
Abstained, okay.
4-1, motion carries. 4-0-1.
4-0-1.
I didn't oppose it, remember?
You didn't vote to abstain either. I didn't see the hand go up.
I said the word.
All right, we'll let that one slide. All right, that one's covered. All right, let's try item 17-83. Ordered that the town council hereby consider and approve tell-view quote number Q-013844 in the amount of $744 for cable access television server add-on to be expanded from the cable franchise fees account.
I will make that motion for discussion.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. And discussion?
My understanding is that something broke down, and they had to get something else out.
No, it says, the original email... During the installation, we encountered some situations that require some additional audio and video converters to complete the installation that were not part of the original order. That's it, so yeah.
Yeah, well, it's similar to a break time.
Doesn't really surprise me, given the massive change from the existing equipment to what they're trying to put in. I mean, I think...
No.
Hard pressed to find anybody who's still using all the same equipment that could plug into a new server like that in this situation.
Yeah, it doesn't seem unreasonable.
No, it's actually, it's actually a fairly small amount of money to spend to fix television equipment.
Yes.
And it is what the tech fund is for. I think it will also strengthen our position in negotiating our franchise agreement to show that we are using a designated technology fund for its purpose, and hopefully also strengthen our partnerships in the upcoming exploratory tech committee.
There will be potentially some additional pieces that could be coming to you at a later date. They've also discovered that the off-site access requires a direct cable hookup for internet access, which isn't actually in there. The cables that are in there right now are the direct feed to town, well, to spectrum. So we will more than likely have to run a new line, basically, from the closet into that room. And we'll be getting to that as soon as we can. So if CATV doesn't have the funds to help contribute any towards that, that also will come back to you. And just so you're aware, right now, that fund has $2,302.46 left in it, so.
Less the 7...
No, that's before we pay this $744.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns, statements? No, nothing? All those in favor, motion carries. Item 17-84, ordered that the town council hereby considers and sign on behalf of the town of Fairfield consent agreement compliance order with Mr. Leonard Poole and Jr. of Army Road LLC as facilitated and provided by the Fairfield Code Enforcement Officer regarding notice of violation of... as facilitated and provided by the Fairfield Code Enforcement Officer regarding notice of violation of land use ordinance located Tax Map Three, Lot Thirty, Route Two O One. There is no action required, the violation was brought into compliance prior to the council meeting.
Wow, that one was woeful. It was a little long.
Yes. And I didn't stutter much, that's it.
No, you did well.
No, one breath and pour it all out. Our eighth order of business is council workshop and other business, discuss the proposed amendments to the Teague Route Two O One Tiff District.
There is one change in the draft that was sent to you that I need to make sure you're aware of, it's a minor change, but it's on page five. Most of this document, as we've discussed before, is just as it was written originally. But there have been a change in two thousand and eleven regarding how you categorize Tiff fund projects. And we literally had it, I mean, previously had it listed under certain categories of the Tiff law, so under town Tiff projects, there were specific titles with subsections that actually were no longer pertinent. And I've looked at our most recent Tiff, which was the gas pipeline Tiff, and the way it's actually listed is the title number itself and not individual subsections. Because there are actually multiple subsections, and we were listing out like one line and one line. So that came to my attention after I sent you to the draft, so that has been corrected in here.
Okay.
If you notice, the sheltering values are actually less than what they were when the Tiff was originally created. And that is due to the fact that the municipality projected that the Tiff district of two thousand and four would continue to grow by five percent every year, which actually did not happen. So that it's actually less than what it was before. The values that I had, the last time we discussed, I had needed to get with the tax assessor. We did find that there were some corrections that needed to be done in this after some conversations with D E C D. We had a couple of lots where we had only captured the land value and not the building. And those needed to be corrected, because you can do that, however, that lot would never be eligible to have any assistance towards its structure or anything. So we've talked to them, and, and because nothing has been done with it, so the original assessed value on the buildings were still going to the general fund, and the captured value from two thousand and fourteen would still go to the general fund even today. And technically, the captured value in two thousand and, not fourteen, in two thousand and four is actually more than what the value is of it right now today, because it's decreased in value. So those original values, we haven't ever collected any Tiff funds on, we haven't done anything, so it's perfectly fine for us to capture them now, based upon that. Because it'll stay just exactly the way it was. So we were able to get those corrected, and there's been some land splits. One was a split that included a little bit more than an acre residential property, which actually isn't eligible, so that's been removed. So there's all those pieces.
So our next step would be having a public meeting?
If you are fine with the way that this is worded right now today, there are a few things that will need to be done, if you are fine with the way this is worded, like Exhibit J didn't have any dollar amounts in there for the last two additional things that we put in, those would just be fixed, similar to other pages. The split in here is still at the hundred percent. We had discussed other things before, whether we wanted to change that, whether we wanted to capture one hundred percent of the new value. The end date is still twenty thirty-five, that will always stay the same, so that's only eighteen years left. So there weren't any other questions that I had, I just continued to keep it in the format that we had in before, with just fixing the lots.
I noticed that on page five as well, you highlighted down at the bottom, no portion.
So that was to remind me that we need, that was the piece that was, needed to be fixed if you changed it.
Right.
So if you say you wanted to no longer do one hundred percent of the captured value, and you only wanted to do fifty, or you wanted to do seventy-five, that kind of stuff, then these, these areas are high, there's a couple more of them, actually.
Right, I, going through those, I had seen some of them in there.
And the way that, right now, the way this Tiff has been set up is that any credit enhancement agreement that would be given is only up to seventy-five percent of the captured value, twenty-five would always go to the Tiff developmental projects. Seventy-five percent, up to seventy-five percent could go to the developer, no longer than a course of fifteen years. And there's a large application process and program in that all works. So what you need to remember is that the value, so when you get to the back of this and you see the assessor's statements of the value. Okay, so really what that does is, that's the value when the Tiff district was created. The taxes for that value of property continue to go to the general fund, and they, they stay there. What gets captured in the district is the difference between when you captured that value, you basically freeze it. And the additional growth on that property would increase its value. The difference between the original value and the increased value is what creates the number that you work with within the Tiff district. That's the amount that you work with. So like, right now, we have a piece of town property that's currently assessed at zero. If somebody buys it, its value becomes a hundred thousand dollars, then it would be a hundred thousand dollars. That you would, you know, taxes on a hundred thousand dollars, but say it was worth twenty-five thousand dollars right now, your tax increment would only be on the seventy-five thousand dollars for the change.
So twenty-five thousand of it would go to the general?
Because it was the original assessed value. So the original assessed value of the property stays in the general fund, it's only new development that you capture within the Tiff district. So, like, the relationship to the two buildings that didn't get captured before? They actually generate less taxes right now than their value in two thousand and four. But their current tax value generation stays in the general fund, it doesn't go anywhere unless a developer comes in to pick that up. And then the change of value from its original to new, that becomes the piece that you get to use.
Okay, so if it's worth a hundred thousand dollars and they put in structures in there and this thing goes to a million dollars?
The district, the, the Tiff district money that you get to use, if they go into the program, it would be nine hundred thousand dollars.
And that would go into the Tiff, and only a hundred thousand of it would be eligible for taxation going to the
General.
General fund.
Until the Tiff district ends.
Until it ends, and then when it ends, it's done. And every credit enhancement, the credit enhancement agreement policy that the town currently has states that if you are granted a credit enhancement as a developer, you certify that you will stay within the municipality for at least five years after it expires. And also, the, the process, I was reviewing the application again today, because I had to send it to someone. It's, the application itself, I think, is like five pages long, and it asks for absolutely everything. So it gives you, it's reviewed by the municipal staff, it's reviewed by the Economic Community Development Committee, recommendations come out to the council, and the council does the review, and it's set up and designed so to make sure that if you are giving a credit enhancement to a developer, that it is in the best interest of the community, and it's tied to job growth and, and infrastructure growth and those sort of things, so.
I'm just a little concerned that, you know, if we're, if we're looking at millions of dollars in additional valuation of a piece of property, you know, it's not a lot of money out of that that's coming back to the town to give, you know, general fund, to giving relief to the rest of the residents of the town. So I'm a little hesitant on the hundred percent, I'd like to see a number less than that. I don't know if there's any numbers out there, the current council is batting around. I know we did a fifty percent on the gas pipeline.
And that was a fifteen-year Tiff.
And that was fifteen years, yes.
And that was just for the, because that Tiff is merged with the industrial room?
Right, yes.
And that actually is on one hundred percent Tiff for thirty years. That was in the same Tiff. So the gas pipeline track, you did fifty years, fifty was retained in the Tiff district, fifty went to the general fund for fifteen years, that expires in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The industrial park track that's incorporated in that is a hundred percent retained for thirty years, that expires in twenty-three, twenty-four. And I think the gas pipeline track is the only one we have at fifty percent.
Right. Yes.
Because the downtown's at a hundred as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
And the hood market expired last year.
That expired, but
But it was at a hundred percent.
That was at a hundred percent also.
Yeah, that one's expired.
I guess in the, you know, exploring ways to balance the competing interests here, and I, I made a pretty clear last time, but I, I definitely agree with Mr. Taylor's concerns about locking up all the value and, and not having development work for the residents. But what if we were to explore, you know, something along the lines of either the fifty-fifty, or even, you know, saying we're gonna capture seventy-five percent, but then on the other hand, free us up to negotiate credit enhancement agreement, you know, that could be up to a hundred percent of the seventy-five that we retain. It's no different to the developer, but it, it makes it a little bit, a little bit more flexible for us in terms of what we can, what we can reasonably hope to, hope to do, to, to make this work.
So what we currently have in place, like we said, the hundred percent, and only seventy-five percent of the project can be used for credit enhancement. So what you're saying is, what if we did seventy-five percent of the capture, but one hundred percent of the capture could be used towards the development?
I mean, we, we have to negotiate this credit enhancement agreement with the developer anyway. So, I mean, we, we'll have to assess that based on their needs, so it's still giving us the same pool of money to, to use for that purpose. But it's also giving us the, the opportunity to use some of the, some of the increase from development to do things like pave roads and turn our attention to our, some of our rural communities that really are not getting the full benefit of these Tiff districts in town.
I, I think that my concern with, with using seventy-five percent over fifty percent would be that we set ourselves up for a huge tax increase once, once all that money comes back into full view. Once it, once it falls off the Tiff, then i- if we're using seventy-five percent of it in, in sheltered status, then in eighteen years, we're gonna have a, a huge increase in our, our taxable value, and a lot of that money's gonna disappear.
Let me address the chair, please, I need to use the
We will have a, just a short recess for five minutes?
Thank you. Thank you.
So along the lines of what you were just discussing, I have the opportunity to do a little bit of math. And right now, based upon what the captured assessed value is of the district, if all was included at a hundred percent, it's eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So twenty-five percent of that is gonna be two hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. And at this year's current mill rate, that's an extra five thousand dollars that would've gone to the general fund.
I, I would say, for perspective, that's about the amount of fuel oil that the, that the town meeting felt it was necessary to remove from the budget in order to, to, to bring things where they wanted it, so I mean, that is, that is value that's, that I think people do want to see in deciding how to set budgets. To the point of, you know, what happens when these Tiffs fall off, and we get hit with that, I think that that's a major issue that we are going to have to discuss for years to come, because we do have, I think, was it, this Tiff alone is nearly, going to be nearly two percent of the valuation of the town, correct? It's one point nine four percent would be in this one district?
Yes, no, well, that's all the districts combined.
All the districts combined.
It's two percent.
All right, two percent, so I mean, we're, but we're, we're hitting the limit for what we can really do in that respect. And so essentially, we have set up a situation where starting ten years from three months ago, effectively, we are going to start seeing stuff come back on, if, if revenue sharing is still a thing, and, you know, they're still using calculations similar to what we do today. We're gonna see probably pretty drastic reductions in revenue sharing, because we no longer have all this protected value. We do have to, we're, I don't think, based on the projections that we've seen here, that the value of the, these properties is going to have gone up so much as to make up for all of that. And I do think that we need to recognize that Tiffs do not create money out of thin air, we have to pay that back at some point, and it's gonna start when these Tiffs start expiring. So I, I do take your point that capturing too much upfront is gonna make that cliff a lot higher when we fall off of that.
You know, as long as we've got something there to provide an incentive, we've got some monies to work with, I mean, it's a negotiable number. We can negotiate those things. You know, as long as we're competitive and we're staying, you know, ahead of the curve with everyone else, you know, it keeps us, you know, in line to get these, you know, these projects in the town, you know, without sacrificing our future.
That's, the other thing is, is that's all based on if we stay perfectly stagnant for the next twenty years.
If we stay stagnant, well, let's hope we don't.
Exactly, that's the, the point, we've got to continue to step and move forward, we've gotta create jobs and bring it in.
And, and I think everyone hopes that we, that we grow, but we also know that growth is not something that the town of Fairfield necessarily gets to control. We had very little to do with the financial crisis that wiped out, you know, the, the incomes and, you know, investment values of the people who reside in our town. I think that having a Tiff that allows us to incentivize bringing in a new partner in our economic development is a good idea. But I also wanna see that upfront, the residents of the town can see some tangible benefit from that, even if it is five thousand dollars a year, even if that is just buying the fuel oil that the police department and the fire department need to work at their best, and putting that back into, you know, something that benefits everybody, I think that would be a good thing.
I, I agree, I believe that we do need to put some of this directly to the, the general fund, I just don't want it to be too large a percentage.
So, if you can decide how much you would like it to be tonight, we can make sure we schedule a public hearing, and you can vote to approve this change at your next meeting.
So the remainder of it will be the eighteen years, it's what percentage that we're looking at? Is it the, I'm getting the general idea that a hundred percent is, is not very palatable to several members. Is it a seventy-five, is it a fifty?
Eighty-twenty?
Eighty-twenty, seventy-thirty? Sixty-five, thirty-five?
Again, to me, it seems like keeping the, the, the sort of effective framework of what, you know, what this agreement says, if we did seventy-five, twenty-five, but then freed ourselves up to negotiate up to a hundred percent of that seventy-five as part of the credit enhancement agreement, we're not tying our hands on the incentives that we wanted, we are putting some money back in the general fund, and we're still sheltering a significant amount of value.
I can live with that.
It can easily be done, it just needs, you just switch, all we will do is change it from the hundred percent to put those two factors in there, and the portion where it says we will give up to seventy-five percent of the value for a credit enhancement agreement, we just change that to a hundred.
Yeah, yeah. Which would be seventy-five percent of the, seventy-five percent?
It would be one hundred percent of the seventy-five percent, so it would be seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Which would be the same thing, it would, they would be eligible, the same amount someone would be eligible for if you went at a hundred percent and only offered seventy-five percent. So what you could offer to the developer stays exactly the same. The amount.
Up to.
Up to amount, that is exactly the same number.
Okay.
The difference is, is that twenty-five percent that was left over, instead of it going to the Tiff program, goes to the general fund.
Directly to the general fund.
So it'd be that change, and then there's a statement in here where it says no portion of this goes to the general fund, I'll need to go change that. I'll need to go change that. And then that also gets added to Attachment J where it says where will these funds go and it'll be proportion, it'll get recognized in there. So just a couple of places to change, which is why all those areas are highlighted. So we know exactly where to go back to after you make your decision.
Okay.
Yep.
And then set the meeting as, as quick as we can.
So we have enough time to schedule the public hearing so that you'll be able to do your public hearing at your next meeting in two weeks and you'll be able to vote for the amendment at your next meeting.
We can do it all at the same time.
Do it all at the same time?
Okay.
On the 27th?
It works.
On the 27th.
Yep.
But it'll be in the other room, right?
No, it'll be here.
No, it'll be here.
Just say you had a public hearing tonight and voted on the ordinance.
Works for me.
Okay.
It's fine.
Great.
Okay. And we put that one to rest. Other council business. Beverly?
No, nothing tonight.
Jeffrey?
I have a couple of items. First off, I unfortunately will not be able to be here at the, the next meeting. I'll be working out of state that week.
Okay.
And the second thing is October 21st is the date of the home marching band show. So I would, I would encourage all members of the public to come support that. It will be a fantastic evening where nine marching bands will be getting ready at their final show before, before the finals, so.
Did you have any flyers to promote that? Band posters doing anything?
I can get that answer for you.
Because if you can get us that, we like to share stuff about the school so we can help circulate that stuff.
Yes.
How was the town?
Six o'clock.
Thank you.
Mayor?
At the high school.
Lawrence.
On the football field.
Bulldogs.
Last year, the council went to see the marching band before one of their council meetings.
Yes.
It was a great experience.
Yes, we did.
They've always had a good band, always. They had, I was, I played in the band when I was at, went to Lawrence, so.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Yes, I do have something.
Excellent.
As a matter of fact, I would like to just make a note for everybody in town. Doug Cutchins is receiving the 2017 Molina Community Champions Award. He will be one of three recipients for this, for his work at the Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter. It's actually, he's receiving it tonight at an award at the Governor Hill Mansion in Augusta. The Molina Award, just for explanation, is a program that was recreated back in 2006 to honor unsung heroes that work within our community, inspiring others through their extraordinary service and contributions that positively affect lives of those around them, and named after Dr. C. David Molina. And what he will receive is he will receive a trophy plus a $1,000 grant that he probably will give to the homeless shelter.
That's nice.
So it's nice for a citizen of our town to be able to get that award and only one of three in the entire state.
Very nice. Very nice. Well, extend our congratulations to Mr. Cutchin on that.
Yes. Yeah, we will. I had a, I also had a sentiment done up for, too, from the states.
Very nice. Very good.
I just wanted to follow up. John recently told me that the state legislature is being called back to discuss the law regarding local control.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring that.
Who controls?
Yes.
Which is why that was not on your agenda this evening. We are currently monitoring all of that, but will not be bringing that back to council until they actually sit and discuss those law changes. Evidently, there's some sort of peace between the state law and the federal law.
There's a, there is a problem of local control on that and we will lose a lot of federal money if we allow it to happen. I mean, it sounded good and came good out of what we were doing and looked good, but unfortunately, it's one of those oops.
Ah, yes.
So we're watching as the state addresses all of that and as soon as that's all ironed out, we'll have all that stuff and bring that back to you.
We should be...
Or follow up.
According to what I've seen, we should be meeting at the end of October, so.
Very nice. I have a couple of things to mention tonight. There was a couple of residents that approached and told me that they were very happy and pleased with the work of the Highway Department, Public Works, in cleaning up the downed trees in the area and, and cleaning things up afterwards and how professional they were and how well the, the residents were treated and they were just... Excellent.
We had, we believe, almost like a microburst and pretty much from the town office all the way over to the cemetery, there were entire areas where things were just split and thrown everywhere. The brush dump is currently open too for residents to be able to take and drop stuff off where we had it closed. We just, it hasn't been cleaned up yet. While we opened it up, knowing folks were going to need to be able to get in.
Right. So, yes, so kudos to them for, for the excellent job that they did in getting things cleaned up. The second question that I had presented to me was the section from the railroad tracks out on the Martin Stream Road is, we do have in plan to pave that or we do not currently have?
So railroad tracks are tricky. Municipality can't pave two of the tracks because we don't own it.
Correct.
So the area around those tracks belongs to the railroad.
Yes.
We're looking at potentially paving this section that we're currently reconstructing, which is in the railroad tracks area, it's after that. However, those tracks are part of the portion of the system that I just sent that letter to the Department of Conservation on for the rail bed. So if that goes through, they will be removed and that will go away and we'll have, be able to have everything cleaned up and taken care of all the way through there.
So that would be cleared to the, paved clear to the line then after?
After that, yeah. So if we were able to, well, there's, like, I think there's, yeah, it would be because it starts right before those tracks and then it's after that.
From the tracks toward, to Norwich Walk?
Yes.
Okay. So it is in, in the works?
It's in the works, but it's going to be contingent on what happens. So right now, those tracks are exempt, they're temporarily exempt and nobody's doing anything with any of them because that section of the rail is shut down. But it's not officially shut.
Okay.
So, but it is, it's completely unorganized, you know.
Good. All right. Well, that does it for me then. And with that, the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2017. And we will recess at this time to sign all documents that require signatures. Do we have anything that requires signatures?
We have several items.
We have several that require signatures. And then after that, I believe we still have an executive session?
Yes.
We do. Okay.
Motion and a second for me?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
We're in recess.